Looking for the, um. I'm just looking for the Open Public Meeting Act. So that was sent under a separate title, I'm assuming? Or is it in this?
It's actually in the agenda for the special meeting.
Okay.
And I'll need permission to share my screen.
I got it. I got it.
You have to give us a few minutes, Shannon, because we have to go through our opening procedures.
Oh, okay. Well, you let me know when you are ready.
All right. I found the Open Public Meeting Act announcement. Is there anything else we have to do? Or we just start with the pledge and then the announcement?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. All right, so. Um, everybody could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Director, if we could have the roll call, please.
A. M. Pastaro. A. Lewitt. Here. B. Mello.
Present.
B. Reyes.
Here.
M. Russo.
Present.
J. Sanford. E. Seitzman.
Present.
All right. So now I will read the announcement regarding notice. I would like to advise those present that notice of the special meeting of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken has been provided to the public in accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this special September board meeting has been scheduled for Monday, September 20th, 2021, was sent to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on Tuesday, September 14th, 2021, as notification to the general public of said meeting, and sent to the City Clerk's Office of Hoboken on Wednesday, September 15th, 2021, with a copy of the meeting's agenda to be posted on the aforementioned City Hall Bulletin Board. I direct the minutes of this meeting to state that I have announced that adequate notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. In addition, I direct the minutes of this meeting, I direct the minutes of this meeting to state the following. As a result of the restrictions established by Executive Order 107 issued by the Governor of New Jersey with respect to the need to limit public gatherings to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, this meeting will be conducted exclusively through the use of communications equipment. This procedure is in accordance with NJSA 10:4-9.3, which states that a public body shall not be deemed to have violated any provision of the Open Public Meetings Act by conducting a meeting by means of communication or other electronic equipment. In addition, this procedure complies with Article 3, Section 7 of the Hoboken Housing Authority bylaws, which allows participation in authority meetings by members of the Board of Commissioners by means of telephone conference, telephonic, or similar communications equipment. All right. Do you have anything to add to that, Mr. Attorney?
I do, Mr. Chair. This is a special meeting, as the Chair indicated. As a special meeting, the notice given for this meeting limits the discussion to those items in the notice. And you will see that the notice reflects essentially one purpose. The discussion of repositioning of housing authority property. Tonight's meeting will be conducted completely in the public. There will be no closed session. However, tomorrow night's meeting, which is intended to be a sequel to tonight, may indeed, and its notice does provide for, have a possible closed session if that is necessary. As the meeting goes on, if anything develops which could be the subject of closed session, I will note that. And that portion of the discussion will be carried until tomorrow, towards the end of tomorrow's meeting. Other than that, there will be no discussion of any other topics. The bulk of the discussion will be led by our facilitator, Shannon, who will give us input with respect to her topics and discussion. And at any point, if we do hit on something that might be in closed session, we can identify that, carry it to tomorrow. And again, tomorrow's session will start in the public, but could later result in closed session. So when we end up finishing tonight and carrying over to tomorrow, we will still be in public. There will be no comment by the public, which is the case with respect to special meetings. And in tomorrow's meeting, at some point, we may need to ask the public to absent themselves. That's all I have to say at this point, Mr. Chair.
Well, thank you. So I guess at this point, I just hand the floor over to the folks from Enterprise, correct?
I think so. I'd just like to say that why don't we do a little round of introduction? We've got some folks from our other planning team armed with us today from the Porte Gallo team as well. And maybe we can start out with the Porte Gallo's team introducing themselves, and then we'll go over to Shannon, and Shannon can take it from there. So maybe Dave, Christina, Himey, might introduce yourselves.
Dave, you're on first.
But you're on mute.
We'll go to Christina.
Good evening. My name is Christina Piant Schmidt. I am the project manager of the HUD technical assistance to work for Enterprise Community Partners. So this training is a piece of our scope of work, and I will pass it on.
David is still muted. So I'm Himey Bordenave. I'm on the Enterprise team as the financial advisor, looking at the question of how does, how does the Housing Authority look at its properties and look at its options and figure out how to finance the redevelopment or preservation of the properties?
Thank you, Himey. Thank you, Christina. And if David's still remaining silent out there, we might move right on over to Shannon. And Shannon's going to spend some time and do what we'd like to do is, by the time we're done with this tomorrow, to have all of us really, really on the cutting edge and educated on every aspect that's, that we possibly can on the rehabilitation redevelopment process for a housing authority in today's world. So we'd really like to get everyone up on the same page. We've been working with this so closely for so long that we thought it was time. I thought it was time that we really got, got everyone educated, so, so we know where we stand. I should note that James Sanford has joined us. Welcome, James.
And so I'm happy to get started, but I can't share my screen currently. It says I've been disabled.
Angel, can you help us out with some screen sharing here?
It's a little.
Here we go. All right. I want you to see. Okay. Hoping you see the right screen. Let's see. All right, so. I'm assuming you can see a screen that says Public Housing Repositioning Strategies. Is that accurate?
See.
All right, great. Okay, so good evening and welcome to what is going to be a very condensed version of HUD's Public Asset Repositioning Training. So the goal, as Mark said, for tonight is to give HHA's stakeholders a basic understanding of the HUD programs that are now available to all PHAs across the country, including HHA, who are interested in physically and financially preserving their portfolio of properties for the long term. So the way tonight will work is it is normally a full day training. So we, I have gone through and taken out some slides that I think could, you know, go into the weeds too much. And though every, every so often, I'll stop and ask if there's any questions. It is a lot of material, and I'm happy to answer questions along the way. Okay, so I'm Shannon Leston. I work for a company called Recap Advisors out of Massachusetts, and our firm does consulting, and in this role, I'm doing, I'm providing technical assistance to HHA through Enterprise. And Tori is also on the team with me. He'll be doing the training tomorrow evening. So here is an overview of the agenda. Not going to go through step by step, but I'm going to talk to you about all of the repositioning options that are available. And then tomorrow, Tori's going to talk about what we called financial feasibility. Really, how does HHA go from a portfolio of properties in poor physical shape, you know, with a lack of resources, to a fully renovated or rebuilt stabilized portfolio of properties? So how do we, you know, when you look at what we have now, and we're going to try and get to a very different place, we're going to explain how that works financially tomorrow. Okay, so what is wrong with public housing? Well, there's probably a lot of things wrong with public housing, but predominantly, the conversation tonight is going to revolve around the fact that the nation's public housing stock, including HHA's, is really struggling financially and has a significant capital, has significant capital repair needs. Across the country, it's estimated that the capital backlog is $26 billion, and I must, and that has been proven to be very conservative. And so in response to that, HUD has developed lots of repositioning tools to address the problem. They come out with one that feels like every six months, so it's a lot to keep up with. And we don't, we don't expect all of you to be experts, but at least provide you a foundation to understand what's going, what is going on now and what will be happening over the next couple of years. And it is confusing. It's still confusing to me sometimes. But what we're going to do is try and provide some clarity. So what does repositioning mean, or otherwise known as conversion? You're going to hear those two terms interchangeably and quite often. Repositioning basically means we're taking a unit of federal public housing out of the public housing inventory by converting it from the public housing Section 9 funding platform to the Section 8 platform. And what that enables us to do is to preserve the affordable housing availability, either through a project-based physical unit or with a voucher. So to understand why converting from public housing to Section 8 might be a good decision, it helps to know a little bit about each of the programs. Starting with, what is public housing? Sounds like we should all know this, but I always find it interesting to, to learn a lit, a little bit. I got online today and Googled a little bit more information on public housing. But basically, public housing was established back in 1937 to provide decent and safe rental housing for the low-income families. Originally, there are about 970,000 public housing units that were administered by about 3,300 public housing authorities. And the way the funding works for public housing, and this is kind of a key piece to understanding the difference between public housing versus Section 8. So public housing is funded through two main funding streams. The first one is Public Housing Operating Fund. And the, the operating fund, or operating subsidy, as it might be called, is intended to cover the gap between what the tenant rent is, and typically in public housing, that would be 30% of their adjusted gross income and the cost of operating the property. The second form of funding is called the Public Housing Capital Fund. And those funds are intended to do renovations of the properties and replacement of capital items. You know, things like on the unit turnover, when you're, when you need new appliances, or if the roof has a leak, or you need new HVAC system, that's what the capital fund is for. So these two funding streams are awarded annually, and it's based on a formula and subject to congressional appropriations and can go up or down each year. So the problem here is that both streams are deeply underfunded. And since 2000, with the exception of three years, every year, the calculation of what Housing Authority needs has been prorated. And so a Housing Authority doesn't always get what they need to operate their properties. There are no additional funds to build more public housing. There hasn't been any since the mid-1990s. And since the mid-1990s, we've lost about 200,000 units of affordable housing because of physical deterioration. When a Housing Authority, in exchange for the subsidy, provides housing for low-income families, they, there is a use restriction placed on the property, and it's called a declaration of trust, DOT. This ensures that the project is used for low-income housing. And here's another key point. So the DOT indirectly restricts a PHA from placing any encumbrance or debt on the property. And that is going to be something that, as we talk about tomorrow, being able to leverage debt by the income stream of the rental, of the RAD rents is going to enable the Housing Authority to borrow money. And currently, under the public housing program, it's almost impossible to do that. So that was public housing. So Section 8 was created in 1974. The Section 8 program became what we call the first true deep subsidy program targeting extremely low-income residents. The public housing program actually targets low-income housing, and Section 8 targets extremely low. So HUD establishes a contract rents to the owner, and every month makes up the difference between the approved contract rent and what the low-income household can pay. So it's not a formula-based award given by Congress on an annual basis. So there, initially, there were two types of Section 8. The Housing Choice Voucher Program, known as HCV, and that is tenant-based assistance, which means that the subsidy is attached to the family, and the tenant can take the subsidy, the voucher, and go out into the private market and rent a unit from a landlord. The second type of Section 8 is what we call Project-Based Rental Assistance, PBRA. And it's called project-based because the subsidy is actually attached to the unit and not the family. So a family can apply to move into a property with project-based assistance. As long as they're in that property, they get the housing assistance. When they leave, they do not, they no longer have housing assistance. Then in 1998, Congress authorized what we call the Project-Based Voucher Program. And that allows a Housing Authority to project-base a certain amount of its Housing Choice Voucher Program. And there are lots of rules, and it's pretty complicated, and we're not going to go into that in great detail tonight. But the concept is, it's kind of a hybrid. So the actual subsidy is project-based. It's attached to the unit. But it also has a choice mobility component, so that a resident who's been living in a PBV unit, after 12 months of living there, if they would like to, can actually request a mobile voucher and go to the leasing, the Section 8 leasing department, and request to get a mobile voucher. And they are put at the top of the waiting list, and they get the next available voucher. So as you can see, it's a combination of both the mo, the choice mobility and the project base. I'm going to pause right there and see if anybody has any questions so far. Okay?
I just have a quick one.
Sure.
So in an instance where someone's been living in the Housing Authority for a year, they then have the ability to go and request that mobile voucher? But that does not restrict any of the subsidy to the Housing Authority at that point, correct?
Correct. It's a double dip for HUD, basically.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, pretty nifty.
Hey, listen.
Okay, so why are we, what's all the hurrah about? Why are we repositioning public housing? Well, the benefits of converting from Section 9 to Section 8, what are they? Well, first of all, it places the property under less restrictive requirements. Section 8 versus public housing is, there's much less regulatory mumbo jumbo that goes on with the Section 8 program. It also, as I mentioned before, and we'll talk about tomorrow, allows for access to debt and low-income housing tax credit equity, which, if needed, can raise financing to do substantial repairs. It also allows PHAs to retain full control of the property instead of HUD. Right now, in public housing, HUD controls the property. Once you convert to Section 8, then the Housing Authority controls it. It allows the PHA to preserve the property with project-based assistance or to issue tenant-based vouchers to residents. You have some choices. It provides a long-term, I should say renewable, extendable housing assistance payments contract with funding based on the contract rents. So it's predictable, it's stable project revenue, and this is what hap, this is how the Housing Authority is able to leverage debt. There are rent adjustments built in to the contract rents, and the cash flow is unrestricted. Whereas in public housing, any cash flow, well, there's not really any cash flow. Basically. If there were cash flow, then it would be restricted, and it would go into the reserve account, which HUD controls and can sometimes recapture those funds. That does not happen under Section 8. So this is a really good visual, I think.
Shannon, if I, if I, if I could interrupt you for one quick second.
Yeah.
If you could just, that, that last slide, it felt like was really important, because we've started to engage in that.
Okay.
Could you just get into a little more depth about the access to debt and the advantages of that before you move on?
Sure. And then, again, tomorrow night, we're going to spend a lot of time on the financial pieces of this. But at Fox Hill, basically, what happened there was you did a RAD conversion, and you were able to take the HUD-approved RAD contract rent, which is predictable. It's a 20-year contract. And lenders are very comfortable lending against a 20-year housing assistance payments contract. So they basically underwrite against HUD's promise to provide Housing Authorities the Section 8 rents. And so that allows for Housing Authorities to borrow money. You know, just like you would do on a personal level, you know, depending on your income, and see how much debt you could borrow. So that's what happened at Fox Hill. I don't believe that Fox Hill fully leveraged itself, so that the cash flow there is quite good. So, you know, it's up to a Housing Authority in terms of how much, whether they do, what types of financing they choose to bring into a deal, and we'll talk about that tomorrow night, what's available for funding. But I'm not sure if I answered your question.
No, you did. That was great. We can definitely explore more tomorrow night. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, tomorrow night's probably going to be more interesting.
So if I could just add one point, Shannon.
Yeah.
Historically, of the 150,000 units of public housing that have already transitioned to Section 8 through the RAD program, about a third of the projects have actually converted with not taking on any debt or doing any tax credit transaction. So it's, it's, it's all based on, on the condition of the property. The one requirement that HUD has for using the RAD program is that the, the authority has to submit a financing plan that demos, that has data from a third party, independent third party, what the 20-year capital needs is, and then presents a financing plan that shows that either through the added revenue through the financing structure, the authority can build up the reserves at the project level and take care of those 20 needs, 20-year needs over the 20 years, or they're going to borrow money to address immediate needs and then still build up a reserve, but at a lesser rate. Or they can borrow and then leverage that with tax credit. So that's, it's, it's really the condition of the property and the, and the plans the authority has for its portfolio and for the property that really shape how it gets financed.
Yeah, and we're going to go into that a little bit later today, tonight, too. So as I said, this is a good visual if you're a visual learner. So pre-conversion on the left-hand side, the green and the red and the blue. So we have formula-based funding in our public housing program. So the green and the red and the blue, they actually are all subject to, well, the green and the blue could be subject to funding cuts, proration, not knowing what you're getting in those buckets year to year. And of course, the tenant rent is also not stable. It can go up and down depending on what's going on with the resident. You know, maybe they lost their job, what have you. So in theory, you know, maybe one month on a particular unit, you're collecting $792 in the public housing program. And then maybe the, the next year on that same unit, you're collecting $640. You know, or then the tenant loses their job, and the next month even of the same year, you're collecting $300. So it just, it depends on circumstance, and it changes year to year, fluctuates. So when you convert to Section 8, what HUD does is they, they set the RAD contract rents every two years, and they do it based on what the Housing Authority is collecting in operating fund and capital fund. So they combine the blue, I'm sorry, the green and the red, and then they take the average tenant rent contribution for that same year, and they add those three together. And for this particular housing, this is not HHA, this is a random Housing Authority. For this particular Housing Authority, HUD says that, okay, we'll, we'll give you, we've combined, the housing assistance will be based on the combined operating fund and capital fund. And then, of course, assuming it's the same resident, you get the, collect the same tenant rent, which is $318. But that rent, the difference between the two is that, I'll use the cursor here if I can get it over there. So if something, if something changes here in the blue on the tenant rent side, if it goes down, then HUD is obligated to make the Housing Authority whole at $792. So it'll, in the orange portion would increase if the tenant rent decreases. So it'll in the orange portion would increase if the tenant rent decreases. So every month, you know that you're getting seven hundred and ninety two dollars, which is the contract rent. And over here, so the side note is the seven ninety two that was formerly the public housing becomes a guaranteed contract rent. Which becomes a dependable revenue source that you can then leverage against. Um, so it's just showing you how the left side can fluctuate month to month, year to year. But once you've executed a 20 year half contract, um, there is, um, there's no movement here on the seven ninety two.
I have a quick question.
Shannon, quick, quick question.
Yep.
Go, go ahead, Andrew.
No, guys.
No, it, it just sounds like it's a great floor. Is it also a ceiling?
Um, so when you convert, um, under RAD, um, you would have a, what they call an annual. OCAF adjustment, operating cost adjustment factor increase. So your rents would go up every year. By a percentage, which is a statewide percentage, it's generally between two and three percent a year. Your rents would go up.
So what about, what about if our resident makes, um, you know, some way they double their income? Does, does their fortune go up?
Mm-hmm. Yep, their, their, um, contribution is based on thirty percent of their adjusted gross income. So if their rent goes up, then the housing assistance payment goes down.
So it sounds like a win-win. It, it, it creates a base that you can't fall below, but it doesn't limit your increases.
Correct.
Well, yeah, that's, that's, that's where my question leads. So let's just say it's a, a year like we just had where a pandemic comes. And, uh, our rents fall by sixty percent. You know, people can't afford, they can't pay their rent, and they lost their jobs, whatever the case. Well, how does that negatively impact us? Because I, I couldn't imagine that the, the HUD is just gonna keep subsidizing that. Uh, is there, is there a point in which they're like, okay, that's enough? Or, or is there, does this negatively impact us somewhere else?
That's the beauty of converting to section eight. Um, yeah, no, even if, um, even if all the residents lost their job. HUD is under contracts, um, to pay you the seven ninety two per month.
Well, can you just, can you explain to, can, can you? Yeah, it's, it seems, can you explain to why that, that, why they would do that? What, what is, it just seems like so much risk for HUD to take on. What would be, obviously there is a calculated risk there and there's a reason why. Is it, is my, am I right on that or can you explain?
Um, well, there's always a risk, as with everything, that Congress would not fund section eight. Um, but in the history of the section eight program, that's never been the case. So you'll often hear the term, um, you know, based on appropriations. Um, you know, so. There is a risk that they wouldn't fund section eight, but if that was the case, then what they would do. And this is, it's not gonna happen, but if you're asking the question, then they would give everybody a, a mobile voucher. Um, and then all of the affordable units would be lost. And there is too much, um, political. Strength on the Capitol Hill for the section eight program that that would never happen. Because it's not just public housing, like public housings are the last ones to come into the, the section eight. Program in terms of the project base piece. Um, there are lots of multifamily section eight owners across the country. Who are vested in this program, who have lots of money, who are well connected, um, on the hill. So sex, nothing's gonna happen to section eight, whereas with public housing, um, there's not that really strong. Um, force, I don't know what I'm trying to, I mean, I know what I'm trying to say, but I'm not saying it well. Um, you know. It's just, it's a dying program and now there, um, they are trying to purposefully. Um, encourage housing authorities that, that it makes sense for, and it doesn't make sense for all housing authorities at this time. But for the ones that it does make sense for, um, to go ahead and switch the funding platform. Um, HUD moves around money and, um, you'll go from public housing to section eight. And it's just a much more stable platform, which is why this is, I know it seems too good to be true. But it's real and it, and as Jaime said, a hundred and fifty thousand units have already gone through this program since two thousand and twelve. Um, and it's the real deal.
What happens if, uh, if a tenant passes away and we don't fill that unit for, I don't know, five months? Do we get the seven ninety two each month or is it?
No.
Just.
Yeah, so there's vacant, when you sign a HAP, when the housing authority executes the HAP, housing assistance payment contract. There's vacancy provisions in there. So I think you can get up to sixty days of partial, uh, partial rents. If you're actively trying to fill that unit. So if you're doing a good job and you're on top of it, you could easily fill that unit within sixty days. Um, in fact, if you're doing, you know, i- if you're effectively managing, you could probably turn the unit over in three or four days. Um, so it's really one of the things that section eight does. It encourages housing authorities to operate more efficiently. Um, you know, for, for that reason that you just spoke about, um, if the vacancies, if the unit's vacant, then you don't get paid for it.
So we, we would need to be on top of our game with, uh, inspections, with maintenance. To make sure that when a unit is turned over, that it's not in such dire shape that it's gonna, it's gonna take. At times, six months to, to repair everything to get someone in there. Is that right?
Correct, correct. So your unit turnover and that's something that enterprise, um, enterprise is working. Um, with the housing authority on, your unit turnover needs to be really quick. Um, so again, for all kinds of reasons, it encourages efficient operations. Again, like cash, remember I mentioned cash flow? So the more efficiently you operate, the more cash flow that you have. Um, which is yours to use to further your mission.
It's under, but it's under, it's under HUD's control.
No, it's not, not the cash.
The cash flow is not under HUD, I thought you said before it was under HUD.
A night switch over.
Nope, um, public housing, under public housing HUD controls all your money. Um, once you convert to section eight, um, if you ha- if you operate efficiently and you have cash flow. That is not HUD's money, that's the housing authority's money.
So we can do anything, I mean, aside from, uh, going to Atlantic City, uh, we, we, well. I guess I shouldn't mention that example because it's kind of sensitive.
Yeah, you guys don't have.
We, 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 we could, we could have, uh, we could pay for, uh, I don't know.
Well, you could build another building. I mean, basically, yeah, you're, basically what you're doing is you're gonna be charged to further affordable housing in your community, right?
Got it.
Um, and that's what you need to use the money for.
Cool.
Shannon?
Yeah.
You stated that that works for certain housing authorities and not others. Um, could you explain why it wouldn't work for all housing authorities?
Sure. Um, so first of all, the need, as Jaime mentioned, a lot of this, and we'll go into a little bit later. A lot of this, um, conversion depends on the physical needs of the property. So housing authorities that have a portfolio that are, um, have a lot more physical needs than others. Um, need to probably, um, leverage debt and, um, take out tax credit equity or borrow tax credit, not borrow. Um, get tax credit equity, get some grants and all that type of stuff. Some housing authorities don't need to do all of that. Um, and they're operating fine the way things are. It's typically the smaller housing authorities that are like that. Um, and either A, they choose not to because they're in a good position where they are. Or in some cases, the, and I'm gonna show you this also in a second, is the RAD rents. Um, vary from, from housing authority to housing authority and from AMP to AMP. So there can be a big swing in what one housing authority would get for rental income versus another housing authority. Um, and so even if you, um. The RAD rents, again, this will, we'll go over this tomorrow. A lot of it has to do with the financing. If the rents are too low, then oftentimes you're not able to leverage any, um, debt. Or your properties aren't large enough and you can't leverage debt. Um, or you know, you've got other issues going on. There's a lot of, um, dysfunction in a lot of housing authorities. I mean, it, it could be a variety of reasons. Um. That it's just not appropriate at, at a particular time for a housing authority. We see lots of housing authorities come through for technical assistance and, you know, they're just, they're not in a position either. Um, financially or with the board or with stakeholders to be able to move forward in the process.
Uh, a quick question off topic here, uh, just got from a resident. Are they even gonna have the opportunity to ask questions or have a public portion during this or no?
This is Harold Fitzpatrick. As, as special meetings, our bylaws provide that the public will not have any public opportunity like they would at a regular meeting. If they had any questions with respect to this, they could probably ask them later at a regular meeting.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna move on from this just because we have a lot of things to cover. Um, but if you have questions, just, you know, jot them down and we can try and answer them later. Okay, so, um, the outcomes of repositioning public housing. So a hundred and forty or a hundred and fifty, depending on what, what date is, units converted so far. Um, there's about a hundred and fifty thousand more in line to convert. So they've got applications in or they're in the process. Um, but converting to section eight has allowed housing authorities to, um, modernize their aging properties. Stabilize property revenues, conduct substantial rehab. Demolish and redevelop distressed or obsolete properties. Create affordable housing in neighborhoods of opportunity. Um, thin densities and mixed incomes and streamline operations. So what do the residents gain? Um, so obviously, um, better physical conditions, um, a big part of, um, what HHA is looking into is doing substantial renovations. Um, they will get long-term affordable rental assistance. Um, and that, that piece we mentioned about the flexibility to move, um, with a housing choice voucher. So all positives for the residents. And this is entirely voluntary. Um, so HUD is not going to end the public housing program. Um, you still have, housing authorities still have access to capital, um, funds and operating funds and energy performance contracts. Just FYI. Um, and the big question, will my PHA continue to exist if I reposition? So what happens if you convert all of your properties to section eight? And the answer is yes. In fact, repositioning gives housing authorities options to subsidize housing. Outside of the public housing model, you know, with section eight. And it does not reduce the local control, um, of the existing units. In fact, it provides more local control and flexibility to meet the community, meet the community's needs. All right, so here's where it gets a little complicated. Um, so we're gonna talk about repositioning options. Um. And I will try and make it as clear as I can. Um, this little, um, so as I said, the reposit, this used to be a smaller chart, but HUD keeps coming out. Because this is, um, really working well for a lot of housing authorities, HUD, HUD keeps, um, coming out with new options. Um, for housing authorities because they really do want this to work. Um, so they've really spent a lot of time listening to what works with housing authorities and what doesn't work. Um, so although this reflects every option possible, um, HHA, we're really gonna be primarily focused. On the RAD section eighteen blends and section eighteen demo dispo. And so basically what this chart is saying is, um. Back in two thousand and twelve, we had, we had a, um, a program introduced called the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program, RAD. You're gonna hear RAD a lot. Um, when you convert, when housing authority converts using RAD, they have two choices. They can convert using section eight project based rental assistance. Remember back to that section eight slide I showed earlier, PBRA. Um, or they can, um, convert using section eight project based voucher assistance. The other choice is to do section eighteen demolition or disposition. Um, when a housing authority chooses to do that, they have the choice of converting to section eight. Project based vouchers or section eight tenant based vouchers. Um, then there's something in between called a RAD section eighteen blend. It's a combination of the two. Um, and that allows housing authority to convert to section eight project based vouchers. On the section eighteen side and either PBRA or PBV on the RAD side. But it's a blended property. It uses both RAD and section eighteen. And I'm gonna explain these later. You don't have to ask questions right now. Um, another option is called streamlined voluntary conversion. Um, this is not something, um, this is. Uh, more for properties, well, you have to have two hundred and fifty units or less, first of all, to even consider it. Um, but it is not considered widely a preservation, um, tool. Which means that you're, um, rehabbing and really putting a lot of energy and money into the existing property. And then for housing authorities that have scattered sites, which HHA does not have scattered sites. Um, another option is to do section thirty two homeownership. Again, I know this is all confusing and there's too many lines, but.
Just a quick question, Shannon.
Sure.
But do we ever limit ourselves, I mean, with the exception of the, um. Of the option for a smaller housing authority, but do we ever limit ourselves from incorporating other? Um, other aspects of the program such as, such as the homeownership?
Um. So the, the home, you're not limiting yourselves right now with not doing homeownership because you don't have, um. The inventory to actually, to do that.
Correct.
Um, but if it's something that appealed to you, so that's kind of the beauty of all of this. In that, once you start converting your portfolio and, um, housing authorities is actually making money. Um, if you wanted to start a homeownership program, there's no reason, um, why you couldn't do that.
That's what I wanted. Thank you.
Is there, are there programs in, in, in the United States that have done the homeownership successfully?
Yeah, I think Jaime is more familiar with homeownership than I am. Um, but there are definitely housing authorities who have successfully done homeownership programs.
HUD has had a very long history.
Jaime, before you address that, I think one of the things that people talk about in Hoboken is, um, like having a housing trust. Where you don't, you don't own it permanently, you have to sell it back to the trust. Because we're in such a hypermarket that, you know, you don't wanna, you don't wanna give an opportunity for somebody to buy. Where they can then sell for market value. where they can then sell for market value 20, 30 years where their estate can sell it. But I think people in Hoboken would be open to having something where you had to sell it back to the trust at a, a certain, you know, determined amount of gain. Still wouldn't get out of control. You know what I'm saying? Because like, we're in such a hypermarket that you might buy a place for 200 grand and that's worth a million dollars. So we don't want to get in that situation, but we do, we are open to the homeownership situation.
Yeah, there's, there's a long history, particularly in your neck of the world, called limited equity co-ops. And which is, sounds like what you're describing on your housing trust concept there. And HUD is, you know, HUD is supportive in fact for housing authorities, starting before HOPE 6, which was its first major funded program to help redevelop distressed old public housing. It had HOPE 1, 2, and 3, which were to, to foster tenant ownership. And, and co-ops were a viable option. And the HOPE 6 program, which was grant-funded, also had, you know, favored, because it was a competitive program, favored having a homeownership element to it. So HUD has been supportive over the years. The, the Section 32 program is, is pretty flexible. I think, I think it would not be that difficult to craft a homeownership program through Section 32 that, that, you know, has, has some equity sharing with the owning entity or the sponsor. Or there's a lot of, lot of ways I think it could be worked out to achieve the goals that you're talking about of limiting the upside and, and sharing on some of the gain when there is a gain.
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested, and Mike, I'd be interested in you kind of chime in if you agree or disagree. I've always thought we could actually like kind of serve two goals of a lot of people in Hoboken and that we could create some of these trust opportunities in historic buildings. So like we're preserving historic buildings at the same time that we're creating them for affordable avenue to ownership. The only thing would be that it, it could never be sold for market rate. It always has to kind of revert back to the entity to be sold again.
Listen, I, I, I think they're, they're all great conversations to have. And, and I didn't mean to kind of put us off on a tangent here. I know that's not in the very near future, but, but it's important to know because those may be programs that we want to address, you know, five years, six years, seven years from now, when, when we have our entire authority rebuilt and, and transferred over.
Which is a great, I'm going to keep going. I'm going to keep going.
I just, if I could just ask this one question, because a lot of residents, I think, are, have been, I've been talking about this. And I think it's kind of important, but the, and since it was brought up, the notion that a program where your rent that you pay each month goes into an account. And then that account is used and built up over time for a down payment on a house or, or, or property. Is that, is that property, is that program available in, in something like this? And, and it is. We, yeah, so I like to, you know, we don't have to do it now, but if we can get more literature on that and what our options are, because that could be in the short term, I, I would assume, right? We can, we can almost launch that, right?
You would have to, I don't know how public housing FSS works. But when you, once you convert, you can certainly implement an FSS program, family self-sufficiency program.
And conventional housing authorities.
Talked a lot about that.
Conventional housing authorities, many, many of them have a family self-sufficiency program where, where there's a contract entered into with the household and they have, you know, guidance on achieving their, their life goals. And, and as you say, they can have a certain amount of their rental payment, especially when they get a rental, and they get a, an increase in their income. Some of that income can go toward an escrow account that then can be used.
Yeah, I love that. I love that.
For their purposes. And that does not require participating in any repositioning strategy or anything else. You don't have to be in RAD or Section 18 in order to do that. That's kind of garden variety housing authority program.
Okay. Well, I look forward to talking to you more about that.
Commissioner Seitzman's talked about that a lot. And, and I think the, I mean, I don't think it's a negative. But the one thing about that is that when you build up the money in this account to put down a down payment, you know, Hoboken is so hyper-expensive that, you know, your down payment is probably going to be somewhere else. But it, but the beauty is, is it's an avenue to homeownership, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's a fantastic, it doesn't have to be in Hoboken, but it gives you the ability to, to, you know, and I'm sure there's programs around it. We, we don't just give these people money and put it in an account, but we're also, we're, we're building a program and education around it, a curriculum on what's it like to own a house? What, what's it like to, you know, to, to get a second job or a third hustle? So that you can build up enough where, because look, it's a dream of everybody to own a house one day. And, and our housing authority residents shouldn't be limited to that.
Can we have, can we have Chen?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to keep going because this is actually a great segue. That's okay. I know. I mean, I, it's great that there's so many questions. I'm just, I'm sorry that we're limited on time. But it, it goes right into, you know, developing a repositioning strategy. So this is, this is perfect. So before you can act, before you, you start converting to Section 8, there's a lot of things that you need to think of as, as a housing authority and as a board and with your stakeholders. And so along those lines that you were just talking about. So what is a long-term goal of your housing authority? You know, if it's homeownership or if it's FSS or if it's to preserve the physical property or build more units, whatever it is, you need to establish your long-term goals. And then you need to figure out which conversion programs that you're actually eligible for. And, you know, which, this is a big one, number three, which conversion programs will actually generate the most potential rental income for you? Because those are the ones you want to do. What are the capital needs of your properties? That is also something that has to be evaluated as part of the whole repositioning strategy. And what is the impact on the residents of all of the things that you're talking about and wanting to do? How does this impact your residents? And a huge piece is what is the PHA's internal capacity to handle conversion? So there's a lot of work, as you can tell, I mean, we've got a lot of brains right now that are, the wheels are cranking and we're all coming up with ideas and trying to address, you know, multiple things at one, at one time. So you, which is wonderful. So if your housing authority doesn't have the capacity to do this by themselves, then you need to bring in consultants, development partners, you know, additional legal staff or whoever you, you know, you're going to build a development team essentially to help you through this whole process. I'm going to kind of skip over this. But it's basically what it is, is a little flow chart. It's kind of like a little cheat sheet, like if you didn't know even where to start, you would ask yourself these questions about, you know, what is the goal of the agency? Is it to voucher out and like just get rid of your affordable housing? Or is it to preserve? And of course, we want to preserve. And then a next step, I'm going to show you how to do this, is you look at what your RAD rents are compared to your regular project-based voucher rents, which is what you would get if you did Section 18. And you compare the two and you figure out which one's higher. And then if your RAD rents are lower, which is the case for you guys, then you look and see, are you eligible for any of the Section 18 sort of streamlined possibilities that would get you higher rents? And the answer here is no. So that brings us down to step four, which is, are you eligible for SVC? And I'm going to say, are you even interested in it? Does it align with your goals? And here, I'm just going to tell you the answer is no. You guys don't even have to think about it. And if the answer is no, then you need to start looking very hard and deep at your physical needs of your properties and whether or not your projects would meet the obsolescence test. So that's just kind of a little cheat sheet. So one of the steps that I mentioned, one of the key factors is in deciding which reposition option is best, is to look at the different rent levels. And so obviously, the higher the rent, the, if you wanted to borrow money, the more money you can borrow and the more physical improvements you can do. It's all directly related. So on the, on the screen, you see on the left-hand side is the RAD rent. And I'm going to show you how you figure out what that is. For this particular PHA, their RAD rent for let's say a two-bedroom is $600, okay? Then you compare that to what that same unit would get if it went Section 18 and it got a regular project-based voucher, not a RAD project-based voucher. And the calculation of that is the lesser of 110% of the fair market rent less whatever utility allowance there is or the reasonable rent. So on the right-hand side, we're going to figure out, okay, well, what will we get for a regular PBB rent? If your, if 110% of the FMR is $800 and the utility allowance is $100, that gives you 700. You compare 700 to your reasonable rent. And here you could just think of reasonable rent as maybe your, your, your market rent. What would, what would you get on the same unit that was unsubsidized in the area? $900. So which one's less? 700. So now you compare 600 to 700. So if you went RAD, you would get $600 for the unit. If you go Section 18, you get $700 for the unit. So you would want to try, if you can, think about ways in which you could get some of the units converted under Section 18. And I'll go through what, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, the, the only question I have here is your fair market rate on your unit. How are we determining that?
It's a HUD-published rent for your county.
Right, okay.
Yep. And it is true that in some areas, about 20% of the areas, the RAD rents are actually higher than what you would get on the fair market rent side. So it is worth doing this whole exercise.
Does, does Section 18 sometimes make it 130% increase? No, I thought, I thought I heard that once.
No, Section 18 is going to be, you know, Section 18 is going to be basically your, your payment standard. 110% of FMR. It can't go above, I mean, there's some, there's some housing authorities that have exception payment standards, but in PBB program, you don't, which I found out a couple of weeks ago, you don't use the payment standard on the PBB program. You just use 110% of FMR.
Okay.
Although Erin, I would say that under RAD PBRA, the PBRA has a cap of 120% of FMR. And under certain circumstances, it can go from 120 to 150% of FMR minus utility allowances if there's a rent comparability study that supports it.
Well, we got it.
Yeah, you guys definitely have, so for you, for you all, your regular PBB rents are much higher than your RAD rents. I don't have them written down. So we want to try and see, you know, we're going to try and look at a Section 18 where we can to get the higher rental income. Because I'm running low on time here, this is just, if you ever wanted to look up RAD rents, you can go to the RAD resource desk. And they have this, every public housing authority in the country has their RAD rents listed. And it shows you, it's done by Housing Authority and AMP. And it gives you the bedroom count and it gives you what your current funding levels are. So here's the 2020, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but this is the capital fund amount that's attributable to the RAD rent. This is the tenant rent amount and here's the operating fund. And that gives you a weighted RAD contract rent. And so that is what you then use to compare to your FMRs. And here, I did a training in Mass, in New England, so this is why I've got Boston Housing Authority, Cambridge, local housing authorities. But you can see right here in this column, it shows you your RAD rents compared to your FMR. So it gives you sort of a snapshot. So you have some indication by looking at this whether going Section 18 might be more favorable than RAD. And as you can see in Boston, it would be much more favorable, and your numbers probably look similar to this, Boston would be much more favorable to go Section 18. Whereas in Holyoke, it's, there's not a huge difference. So that's kind of how that works. I'm not going to go over this because this is not relevant to you and I want to save time. And it's just about if you were eligible for scattered site, Section 18. And then some considerations RAD versus Section 18. So that's going to be the big question for a lot of housing authorities. So if you have a property that does qualify for Section 18, whether it's obsolescence, scattered site, a housing authority with 50 units or less, RAD might still make sense if the RAD rents are comparable or higher than your PBB rents. Your PHA wishes to convert to PBRA, which currently you can't do that under Section 18. Your PHA does not have a voucher program and you can't find an agency to give you, to partner to, to provide or be the contract administrator for vouchers. If your housing authority has a large amount of capital funds and operating reserves on hand, you cannot bring those forward in a Section 18 conversion, but you can in a RAD conversion. And if you are a PHA that seeks to adopt all of the RAD, the robust RAD resident protections, then you might also consider RAD instead of Section 18.
One comment, Greg Byrne from HUD, when he visited the Housing Authority, he called the buildings obsolete and in poor condition. So that kind of makes us eligible for Section 18.
Because Greg said so.
But Greg retired, I think.
We just needed to get it in writing.
What is that, what does that mean? So, so I'm sorry, I just missed that.
Yeah, so I'm going to go over obsolescence in a second.
What, what was Aaron talking about? He, he called the building, which building?
All of the buildings.
The whole campus is, is, is inhabitable, is what he said?
Not inhabitable, it's obsolete. It would take too much money to correct it.
Yeah, I'll explain that in a second. So again, portfolio.
Yeah, I think, just, just to be clear, I think that's the standard we're talking about. We're not talking about the fact that people can't live there. We're talking about that if money is going to be spent on the projects, it would be better to replace them than to repair them because of the level of their obsolescence.
Correct.
Yeah, that's a, that's a very important point that for anyone's listening was clarified. I appreciate that, Erin.
Yep.
Yeah, I, the, the, the difference between inhabitable and, and obsolescence, obsolescence means it's, you're throwing, you know, good money after that, right? It, it, it doesn't make sense to keep pumping money into it. Whereas inhabitable, it's just, it's, it's not fit to live. It's an extreme debt.
Right, yeah. So I know you guys are curious about it, so we'll, we'll get, we'll talk about that topic. Here's just some key considerations when you're doing portfolio planning. I'm not going to go over each one of them, but it is an iterative process. So that what, what HHA decides, you know, in November might, is going to be the plan for repositioning will probably change over time and that's okay. It's a very natural, a lot of housing authorities go through that. Maybe there's another option that comes available. It's a very natural, a lot of housing authorities go through that. Maybe there's another option that comes available. You know, so you have to keep evaluating over and over again before you actually get through your entire conversion. That's really one of the biggest points I wanted to make there. So RAD, well, I do want to make this point, I'm going to pick out the highlights here. So really, so in RAD, you can own, they own the cap on the number of units that can convert under RAD. Right now is 455,000 units. We're probably at about, I have 320 is closed, reserved and processed. So we're not at the cap yet. But what's interesting is that on average, the, the average per-unit construction cost in a conversion is 60,000 a unit, which is pretty generous. This is, just a, again, a visual, RAD is not just public housing. RAD is also an attempt to take many other multifamily programs that are out there, Section 202, MOD Rehab, Rent Supplements, all of these programs actually get thrown into the RAD beaker. Because right now, there's so many programs with different rules and regulations and handbooks and forms. And so this is HUD's attempt to throw it all into one beaker. And on the other side, we just have two programs that we need to understand, Section 8 PBRA and Section 8 PBV. Which makes it much easier. Okay, so here's some key features of RAD. This is a good, a couple of good next slides. So RAD offers permanent affordability, meaning if you go through a RAD conversion, you, the housing authority or the owner will execute a RAD use agreement, which makes the property affordable into perpetuity. Also, capital needs, we're going to talk about this more depth tomorrow. So Tori is going to go through what Jaime was talking about earlier, which is you need to have a physical needs study completed for your properties and you need to be able to fund the, the needs, the physical needs of the property for the next 20 years. RAD has a robust set of tenant rights, which I'm going to go over in a few minutes. Public stewardship, so when you do a RAD conversion, the, the property must be continued to own, owned or controlled by a public or nonprofit entity. Except when you're using tax credits to do the conversion. And then it can be a for-profit owner, but the housing authority would still need to maintain control. And there's various ways of doing that. Transfer of assistance, this is something that is kind of a unique thing for RAD. So if the housing authority wanted to take its Section 8 assistance from one of its existing buildings and maybe build a new site somewhere else and then transfer that Section 8 HAP contract over to the new building, you are allowed to do that using RAD. RAP is also unique to RAD. So during construction, if you have any vacant units or if you're doing new construction, the, on units that don't exist, you actually get subsidy during construction, which is kind of a cool concept. Rent bundling, I'm not going to really talk about here because it's, it's if you had a very distinct difference between a set of rents at one property versus another, you could donate rent from one property to the other one. And RAD is a preservation program. It requires one-for-one replacement of the units. RAD is the only program that allows you to take public housing funds through the conversion process. And it is the only option that allows you to do PBRA. There are certain way, the RAD rents are published, as I showed you, but there are ways you can boost those RAD rents. And I have listed just a few of those ways. We don't need to get into great detail, but we will be looking at all of the ways that we might be able to increase the RAD rents. So resident rights and requirements. So prior to conversion, resident meetings are required prior to submitting a RAD application, prior to having the RAD concept call and prior to submitting the financing plan. So with revision four of the RAD notice, HUD really increased the resident participation requirements. You are required to send out a resident, a RAD information notice prior to application. And if there's going to be relocation involved, you are required to send out a general information notice. RAD conversion is a significant amendment to the PHA plan. So it has to go through the public process and be approved by the board. And you cannot relocate anybody until you receive a RAD conversion commitment from HUD. So during conversion, so here's a big one, the right to return, you're going to hear this a lot. So if you do a RAD conversion, the residents have a right to return to the property. And they, there is no rescreening. So if there are some over-income households, they are allowed to return. Or if there are some folks that are currently overhoused, they are also allowed to return. Choice mobility is what I mentioned to you earlier, you know, after they've been living there for 12 months, then they can go and apply for a mobile voucher. Relocation assistance is, actually goes beyond the uniform relocation requirements. So if there's relocation involved, it's all paid for. Phasing of tenant rent increases, so in some cases, housing authorities have what we call flat renters, where they're paying a ceiling rent. And when you convert to RAD, all residents are required to pay 30% of their income towards rent. So if there are some flat renters, those folks would be phased in over three or five years until they reach 30% of their income. All, several of the termination notification and grievance procedures from public housing are carried over into the RAD Section 8 lease. And the housing authority is required, just like they do now, to fund resident organization. The RAD conversion process, quickly, it's a RAD application. You get a commitment to enter into housing assistance payments. You have to get fair housing approval for certain actions. You have resident meetings, a concept call, more resident meetings. You submit a financing plan to HUD, you receive a RAD conversion commitment. Then you close and you convert to Section 8 and you begin your rehab.
Shannon, if I could add just two small additions to what you said on the, on the rights. If, if a property is being preserved, as Shannon said, the residents have a right to return to that property. If you're moving the subsidy somewhere else, so like you're demolishing a building and moving it to one or two or three different locations, then the residents have the right to follow the money. But obviously, they don't have a right to return to a building that's no longer there. And, and the, the second point is that under choice mobility, Shannon's been talking about choice mobility under, under PBV, project-based vouchers, and that requires 24 months before they can request it. If the conversion is through PBRA, RAD PBRA, the waiting period is 24 months. So there's, there is a difference depending on which route the authority chooses to go on any given property.
So PBV is 12 months, I think you said 24, Jaime says PV 12 months and then PBRA 24 months.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so in, to, to request.
I have a question, I'm sorry.
Sure.
To interrupt.
That's all right.
Jaime mentioned something in reference to, I'm sorry. In reference to the fact that if the building is not down, then the resident doesn't have the right to come back to that building because that building no longer exists. Isn't, is that exactly what Jaime just stated?
Yeah, so he's referring to if, if the assistance were transferred to a new building, then the resident would follow the assistance to the new building because the old building isn't, isn't available anymore.
But then my next question would be, would it be the same as what you explained where if it doesn't matter if they were over income or what the situation is or going through a screening process to be allowed back into a new building? Because technically, the building that they were displaced from or moved from is no longer there.
Yeah, so it's the same, the same rights would apply if you're doing transfer of assistance. Yep.
So they wouldn't have to screen none of that. They would just. Back in.
Correct. Okay, so some of the components that are involved when, that HUD wants to see in order to approve your conversion is they want to see that capital needs assessment that we talked about. They want to know what is your scope of work? So you're going to have an architect and a general contractor that are going to help you put together a scope of work. You have to go through an environmental review. You have to get fair housing approvals for certain things. If you do new construction, that will trigger a fair housing review or if you change the unit configuration. They want to see your development budget, which we're going to talk about tomorrow night. They want to know who's on your development team, who's your part, who's your partners in all of this. They want to know that you're, that you've, your significant amendment was approved with all the correct language in it. They want to, they, they need approval. They, you have to get approval from the field office if you are releasing any non-dwelling assets with your conversion. So that would be like the office, the main office for the building or a community center or something like that. Resident comments have to be included and you have to have a title report. So relocation, I touched on this already. So, move this over. So RAD has its own relocation notice. It's about like, I don't know, 80 pages long. And it is, they are subject to URA plus some. And we talked about they have a right to return, we've already talked about all of this. So some common relocation options. So one of the ways, if you need to do relocation because of the rehab that you're doing, one of the ways you can do it is you accrue vacant units at your properties and then you kind of rotate residents around as you renovate various, various apartments or units. And that's done sort of in a phased approach. So maybe you have five phases to the renovation project. Another way is if a housing authority has other public housing units that are available, you can temporarily relocate to other public housing. If a housing authority owned tax credit properties or multifamily properties, you could also use those for relocation. You can use the, the vouchers and find housing in the private market for relocation. Or you can, one of the ways you do it is if you build a building first and then you move residents into that building and then you renovate the vacant building and so forth and so on. So there's all kinds of ways that you can work, or you could even do renovations in place is another option. Questions? That I kind of just left in there, but. Okay, let's talk about Section 18. Everybody's curious about obsolescence. So we talked about RAD. RAD was a program that was created in 2012, helps housing authorities reposition, convert to Section 8, all the things we just talked about. In the end, what happens is the declaration of trust is released from the property and you're free to redevelop that property. Under Section 18, it's similar. It is another way to release the declaration of trust from the property. But it's a different application process and there's different requirements for Section 18. So, not going to go through all of this. It's a different set of regulations and you'll often hear it referred to as demo dispo.
I, I think Shannon, on, on that slide though, the, the big thing is the asset repositioning fee is different with Section 18 versus RAD, but it is a more difficult process to go through.
Section 18?
Yeah.
Yeah, it can be, it, it's harder to justify. We're going to talk about justification. So you can use Section 18 to do the same things that you do RAD. And for, for HHA, that means preservation of the existing properties. You can still do rehab and all the things that you do under RAD, tax credits, new financing, all of that still works under Section 18. You can also, as a housing authority, if, and this does happen sometimes, if a housing authority wants to dispose of, which also basically means sell their property in the open markets, if it's in a bad location or if it's beyond repair or what have you, you can actually sell that property and use the proceeds to further your, your mission as an affordable housing provider. So when you're getting ready to submit a Section 18 applications, a lot of this is similar to RAD. There's a particular form that you have to fill out, a HUD form, and this is all done through the PIC system, which is a, an online HUD system. You have to have justification. I'm going to go through those in a second. You have, there has to be a reason why you're requesting Section 18. It's not the case in RAD. RAD, you can just do RAD. You don't need a reason why. You also need an environmental review here as well. You also have to do a significant amendment to your PHA plan. You also have to consult the residents. You also have to consult the local government. This is different from RAD. You don't need that on RAD. You need a board resolution to submit the Section 18 application. You have to let HUD know what your method of disposition is going to be. I'm going to go over that as well. You have to let them know what the estimate of the fair market value of your property is. You have to discuss your relocation plan and it's all, as I said, submitted in an electronic system. So here are the justifications. Again, in RAD, if you want to do RAD, as long as you can make all of the financial components work, you can convert under RAD. Under Section 18, you either, you, you have to have one of these reasons. Your property is obsolete and we'll talk about that in a minute. Your property has issues that would harm the health and safety of your residents. Infeasible operation, I actually don't really know what that one is, but well, must be in physi, in feasible to operate. If you have scattered site projects, which is four or less units on non-contiguous sites, you can apply for Section 18. If you're a housing authority with fifty or fewer units, you can apply. You can also combine section eighteen with RAD. And then there are some, there's something called more efficient and effective. Which is basically you're redeveloping the property either on the same site or a new site. But there's things that are a little bit less favorable for that justification. All right, so let's talk about obsolescence. So if you're going to prove that your property is obsolete, you have to have a special physical needs study done. And the physical needs study is going to demonstrate that there are substantial physical issues of the buildings and the units that cannot be corrected in a cost-effective manner. So you get a special PCNA done, which can take into consideration any immediate needs, any replacements that need to happen in the next three years. You can look at anything related to underground utilities. Any type of environmental mitigation that has to happen, any structural defects. If you need to do improvements to bring your properties up to ADA compliance, those can be included. And basically, they use the RS means cost index for pricing these repairs. And it has to follow the international building code and local code, so if your property, if there's local codes that you would have to meet in order, if you were doing substantial renovations, those can also be included in the rehab, the cost to repair the property. And so the goal.
Yeah, just quick, on, on the local codes, does that include our, our flood plane elevations as well?
Does.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we'll have a problem with eighteen.
Yeah, yeah, so any environmental remediation, which is what that would be, can be included. And so that physical needs study has to show, because your main campus is elevator buildings, that the physical needs exceed sixty-two point five percent of HUD's published total development cost for your area. So that's a big mouthful, but I'm going to show you what that means. So here is a chart of, this is, happens to be for New Hampshire. But every year HUD publishes this list of housing construction costs and total development costs. And so let's say Concord Housing Authority wanted to approve obsolescence on its elevator building. You would have to, and this is collectively, but for, for instance, on a one-bedroom unit in the elevator building, HUD is saying that the cost to replace that unit is a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Basically, a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. And so when you put together your whole unit mix for your project and you come up with a total development cost based on your area, your bedroom mix, then your physical needs study that you've had completed has to demonstrate that you exceed, the cost in that physical needs study exceeds, what was the number, sixty-something percent? Sixty-two point five percent of the total development cost. And basically, you submit the physical needs study and all of the costs, oops, I didn't mean to do that. And for this particular property, which I don't think it's a, it's a, yeah, it's a row house, so it's not a, it's not a high-rise, or it's not an elevator building. So the estimated cost of rehab for this particular property was nine point seven million dollars. The total development cost is fifteen point nine, and so as a percentage, it's sixty point eight-three percent. And so because it's not an elevator building, it had to exceed fifty-seven point one-four in order to meet obsolescence. And so it's achieved that goal, we're at sixty point eight-three percent. And so this property, this forty-eight unit property qualifies for obsolescence.
Can I ask why we're not, we, we already did this for HOBO, for our property, is that correct?
No, we haven't done this yet.
So, so what was Aaron talking about? Some guy came and said that everything is, needs to be knocked down?
That was just, he, he had a conversation with Greg Byrne, who heads up the Office of Recap in Washington DC, he came to visit the properties. And he was just walking through and saying, oh yeah, these, these buildings are obsolete.
He made it, he made, now was that before the elev- the, the new elevators in our buildings? And the second question that, to that is, how does the new elevators impact our scoring system here?
So they don't really impact, it, they don't impact them currently because they've been replaced, but had the elevators not been replaced, then it's probably something that would have been included in the rehab, the repair costs to meet that threshold. So a vendor would come, a third-party vendor would come. What was that? Can't hear whoever that was.
Elevator in all the buildings, it's not quite picked out. An elevator. Never, I have a bad connection.
Yeah. Yeah, so basically what happens is a third-party vendor comes and they walk all the sites and the units and they put together a list of immediate repairs and all those things that I talked about. And that has to add up to be more than sixty, whatever, sixty-two percent of HUD's published total development costs. So if they were to walk them now, the elevators would not be included in that replacement cost because they were just replaced, so they wouldn't be part of the repair scope. But things like getting your buildings out of the floodplain would be included. Making your buildings handicap accessible. You know, all those types of things would be included, would be eligible expenses.
I mean, there, there may even potentially be the need for relocating ground floor units, which would then trigger major costs, right? So if you have, especially on our smaller buildings, you had to relocate those ground floor units, you would then have to add additional height to the building to actually do that. Right, I mean, you, you, you're talking about major construction just to relocate units, making sure all of our mechanicals are no longer in our basements. Making sure all of that stuff is, is, is compliant with local zoning laws.
Yep.
So that's, I, I, I truly think that that's what's going to be able to put us in the category of, of dealing, of, of making the move to section eighteen rather than RAD.
Yeah, I think you have mold issues too, I mean, and, and fixing the mold issues is also something that would be part of that scope.
Ma- major plumbing, electrical, I mean, there, there, there's, there's a lot of work that you don't even think about until you really start to think about it.
Yeah. Yep. So as you can.
The systems are huge.
Yeah, systems, major systems are huge, yep. Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, my, my phone died, I, I'm, I'm very sorry, selfishly, I did not get the answer about the elevators, I'm, if you could just fill me in. If the thirty, thirties, the, the, the basic question is, does it, did it make sense to do the elevators before the assessment? Is that going to impact us where we're not going to get where we need to knock these things down because we just put in this, these expensive elevators? That's the, the basic question, sorry.
Yeah, I don't think so, I don't think that that would keep the properties, would be a single thing that would keep them from meeting obsolescence, and I think there, there was, that was sort of a, you can't really, you couldn't really wait to do that. And that happens, you know, if there's emergency things that happen or sometimes you just can't wait. And so, no, I don't think the elevators would be a single thing that would keep them from meeting obsolescence.
Got it, thank you, sorry about that.
That's all right. So when you do section eighteen, you're required to actually sell the property to a different owner. And it has to be a separate legal entity under state law. But the PHA can retain control through ownership or control through a nonprofit affiliate, which I think you guys already have. So your options for disposition are you can sell a property on the open market at fair market value, like public bid or auction. You can do a negotiated disposition, you've identified someone who's going to buy it and you can sell it to them for fair market value. Or you can do a negotiated sale for below fair market value, which is often what happens when we're preserving a property, you sell it to your affiliate entity. And you have to, you have to prove that you're selling it and using it for commensurate public benefit, which if you're continuing to provide affordable housing, that's a no-brainer, you'd meet that test. Or you can also do a, a ground lease. Again, commensurate public benefit, that really just means if you're selling it for less than fair market value, then you have to be providing, you know, public benefit, which affordable housing is. And you'd be required, HUD will require, in this case, that you put a use restriction on the property. They range from thirty years to a hundred years, whatever it is that you decide that you want to do. And then again, if you're selling it at fair market value, you would need to have an appraisal to support the fair market value. Otherwise, you just need like a tax assessor opinion or some other type of way of, method of evaluating, evaluating the property. Proceeds, there are some restrictions, if you do sell the property at fair market value, there are some restrictions on how you can use sale proceeds, but they're not horrible and it wouldn't keep you from doing anything that you would want to otherwise do, which is to provide affordable housing. When you do a section eighteen disposition, what HUD does is they provide the housing authority tenant protection voucher funding for any unit that's occupied within the previous twenty-four months. It is a separate application process. And most times when you're doing a preservation transaction, you would, the housing authority takes that funding and then they place a project-based voucher hap contract back on the property, that long-term hap contract that we've talked over and over about, which helps the prop, helps the owner leverage debt. I'm going to skip over relocation because we've already talked about it. This is again, a comparable slide to the, the section eight, to the RAD timeline and process, this is the same slide for section eighteen, a lot of it, again, feels similar to, to a RAD submission. And then the last thing I'll quickly go through is with revision four of the RAD notice, they, they actually made more options available for housing authorities. And this RAD section eighteen blend is really something that's going to be very valuable, I think, for HHA as we go through this process. But it brings the best of both of these tools together. So in essence, on a portion of your units, you would get the higher contract rents that you would get under section eighteen. But you also maintain the RAD robust resident rights. You maintain the one-for-one replacement requirements. You can actually use your public housing funds as a source in this blend where you couldn't do it if you were doing just section eighteen. But HUD just have used it as one entire project. And there's various levels of, you know, the combination of RAD PBVs or section eighteen PBVs, and it all depends on how much rehab you're doing, so it's like a moving, sliding scale here. So for instance, a project that's completing a fifty thousand dollars per unit in rehab, which equates to forty-six percent of HUD's published housing construction costs for the market area, HUD will approve twenty percent of the public housing units to be disposed of under section eighteen. So it would be an eighty-twenty mix, eighty percent RAD, twenty percent section eighteen, and obviously, the higher, the more money you spend on rehab, the higher you would actually get in section eighteen units compared to RAD units. And then you get a little bonus, if you're in a high-cost area, you can actually do twenty percent RAD and eighty percent section eighteen. If you meet the, the same rehab threshold. The only catch here is that if you're doing a RAD section eighteen construction blend, you can't use nine percent tax credits, which are a competitive form of tax credits. Then the other type of blend that they came up with was, once a housing authority has actually reduced the number of units in its portfolio to where it's two hundred and fifty units or less, then a housing authority can actually apply an eighty percent, twenty percent blend, eighty percent section eighteen, twenty percent RAD on any of the conversions that happen once you get at two hundred and fifty units or below. So that's something that we're going to keep an eye on with HHA to see where that might be the most beneficial as part of the whole portfolio conversion. So again, a recap, there's two kinds of blends, there's a construction blend where you have to meet a certain level of rehab. And there's a small PHA blend. Section eighteen units must be replaced with project-based voucher assistance. And there is the RAD one-for-one replacement. All residents receive the same robust RAD rights, even if they're in the section eighteen units. And housing authority can bring forward all of their, or some of their public housing funds as part of that conversion. This is just talking about the process, which you don't really need to know that right now. But the bottom line is it gets processed just like a RAD conversion. And the Office of Recap, who runs RAD and the SAC, Special Application Center that runs the section eighteen, they work together behind the scenes to get all the required approvals and you just move forward like it's a RAD conversion. All right. Streamline voluntary conversion, I did put one slide in here. Just so that you would understand what that is. So streamline voluntary conversion, a housing authority has to have two hundred and fifty units or fewer. And you would, it's a, it's a, a different kind of an application, more similar to section eighteen than RAD. So you would apply to HUD for SVC approval. You are required to close out of public housing if you apply for this. And just as in section. And um, just as in section eighteen, HUD will provide the Housing Authority Tenant Protection Vouchers for every unit occupied in the past twenty-four months. However, it's statutorily required that you give the residents the tenant protection voucher. Um, and so for that reason, it's not really a popular preservation tool because a lender will, will not, um, you can't leverage against a tenant protection voucher because a resident can move and then that unit is no longer assisted. Ah, I'm tired. All right. Brief recap of the repositioning tools under RAD. We have a standard RAD conversion. There's also a streamlined RAD conversion for housing authorities with fifty units or less. Under section eighteen, um, if you can prove obsolescence or if you have scattered sites or fifty or fewer units or health and safety issues, you can do section eighteen. You can do a RAD section eighteen construction blend, a RAD section eighteen small PHA blend, streamline voluntary conversion, home ownership, and of course, there still is always choice neighborhoods for public housing authorities. And that I'm going to skip. All right. That was slide seventy-six of seventy-six. I, that completes my presentation. I know that was a lot of information that I just threw at you guys. Um, but it gives you some sense of where we're headed with all of this and just how many options are available and the opportunity that is um, in front of you for repositioning your portfolio.
Shannon, I think you did a tremendous job.
Thanks.
Going through just a ton of information that we live with every day and we talk about um, ad nauseam at times.
Um, it's a lot.
At least getting a start.
Yeah, yeah. So again, that was just to give you a little taste of what all of our calls and conversations are about, about repositioning, what the TORDY group is thinking about, what the enterprise group is thinking about, what the HHA team is, you know, and the board. It's just a lot of information.
And I think we'll be having a lot more of these as we progress um, into, by the end of the year. Um, goal of getting our TORDY plan on the ground and functioning and, uh, and starting to make some of these, these, these decisions over the next twelve months. Um, so let's pay attention and let's, we're going to, we're going to have you commissioners working hard and keeping your brain cells going. Uh, I thought the questions were excellent tonight. And um, and I think we can continue tomorrow. And I think if we sleep on this a little bit and you make sure you've got your questions ready and uh, you know, we can, we can keep running this out with a couple hours tomorrow night too. Uh, did I see Commissioner Reyes with her hand up?
Yes, I have just one question. So ultimately, who makes the decision on what route we will go? Is it this board? Is it the director? Is it?
We do.
We do.
It's the board. Yeah, it would be a board decision. But what's going on right now is all of the stakeholder meetings. Um, you know, with the residents and the city and everybody, just to get everybody's input. Um, so that, you know, i- isn't a decision that's made in a vacuum. It's taking into consideration what everybody else thinks as well.
And, and if I could just add to it too, I, I, I think just the understanding of all of it helps, at least for me. But a lot of that stuff is probably just going to be eliminated almost immediately, right? The things that we don't qualify for, the um, you know, once we start doing some of these um, different analysis of, of what we can, can't do. Half the stuff that we talked about, or at least we're educated on tonight, at least for myself, um, we're just not, we're not even going to have to talk about because we just won't qualify for it. Um, I, I, I think that now helps to narrow down what we want to look, look at. Um, understand what all of our goals as, as the Board of Commissioners are. Um, you know, what we want to see, how we want to see those changes. And of course, uh, Director Recco and his team, what they, what they think we should be doing and how we can maximize what, what we have as a, as a housing authority. I think that will all come into play. So um, I'm excited about it. I, I gotta be honest with you. I mean, I was excited about it before tonight, but I'm even more excited about it because I think that, I mean, my wheels are turning like crazy right now, but um, we'll get into it, I'm sure.
Well, that's good to hear.
An exciting time, an exciting process. We, we, we really have.
If I, if I could chime, if I could chime in, I, like, I absolutely agree with everything you just said and um, you know, whatever you thought about the past, this is definitely a little more transparent. And, and that's, that's a good thing because, you know, maybe things would have been done right in the past, but I, I think there's, there's, I was on the board when, when we were going down this road before and it wasn't this much transparency with the board. So I think it's good that, because, you know, we're, we're then educated, we're learning about all the options. We all care about the community, we all care about the housing authority. And, and I think we have a lot of great options in front of us, so.
Director, I have one last question. So what does the HHA nonprofit, what is their role in this whole thing?
Well, quite, a- as Shannon mentioned a couple of times, there are some rules for an HHA nonprofit in the future. Depending on what choices the board and we make. Uh, whether we would want to use the nonprofit as an instrumentality that would have control of the property, the nonprofit's under our control. And then the, then the nonprofit may have a role like it did um, at the Fox Hill um, deal um, to actually act in the housing authority's interest. Uh, because the housing authority may not be able to actually take out the loan, the nonprofit may have to, just depending on what choices we make. The nonprofit or a different nonprofit that we, we might need to form in the future might be able to put, might be able to play a role depending on the type of financing we choose and which of these program roads we go down.
And we got multiple nonprofits, correct, Director?
No, we only, we only, yeah, we only have one. The last housing authority I came.
We could have, we could have more.
Last housing authority I came from, we had five nonprofits. And, and they were all under our control, uh, but it depended on, on what we redeveloped and when.
Right.
So those choices are made as you come closer to that financing option.
Sounds good. And Director, if I could try, address that a little bit, I think, I think there have been, I mean, nonprofits set up all across. Right, I, 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 for one, have not wanted.
Am I the only one having that problem or?
No, no.
I thought it was me.
Try again, Dave.
Yeah.
No good, Dave. His lips aren't moving. He's not saying anything.
I was trying to get off my headphones. Can you hear me now?
No. We can hear you, but it's very poor quality. It's in and out. Nothing.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
There you go. See, Apple, man, they're not nearly as good as they think they are. Um, sorry. So no, I was just, I was just going to say that, like, when we set up the nonprofit, we, I, I for one, didn't want it to be any more powerful than it needed to be. The thing is, Barbara, there's, there's certain loans that our housing authority can't take. They have to set the nonprofit to take up the finance, like the long-term, like twenty-year financing to do like refurbishment of all the kitchens in Fox Hill. And that's why we set up the nonprofit. But I, I don't want the nonprofit to ever have any more power than it needs to have. You know, in, in, in the banking world and in the financing world, you have to, you have to kind of punt some stuff to the nonprofit. But, you know, and that's why when we set it up, we had a choice and we set it up so that there was five members of the nonprofit. And three of the members, a controlling majority, came from the Housing Authority Board. So we, we never wanted the nonprofit to ever be able to kind of like be unruly and kind of run off on its own and do whatever it wanted to do. And, you know, I think that's how we should continue. You know, like the nonprofit should never kind of get ahead of the very transparent Housing Authority Board.
Is there a reason why, is there a reason why the, the, who mandates that we have to have uh, three commissioners on that nonprofit board?
We did.
We, we did because we didn't want it to ever be, so.
I mean, we wanted majority control by this board, you know?
But isn't like, isn't that contradicting what you just said? Because if you, if you don't want to have full control and you want an unbiased nonprofit that overlooks what's going on, even though the board is who they answer to, then we could have the board be made up of no commissioners. And then it would be completely unbiased.
And. I don't, I don't want that at all. I don't want that at all, Commissioner. What I was trying to say, and I, I might not have stated myself clearly, we, we are a um, government entity-appointed board, right? The, the, the seats, the majority of the seats are appointed by the city council. And then this one seat appointed by the DCA and this one seat appointed by the mayor. I want us to have full control of any nonprofit. Because the nonprofit, I mean, most people in Hoboken don't even know that a nonprofit exists, let alone the procedure for appointing the members. So I would never want the majority of the members to not be HHA commissioners. You know, the way we have it set up now, there's five members of the nonprofit board, three of them have to be HHA commissioners.
But if all five, let's say all five.
The first, the first is the chair and that's automatic. And then the other two are appointed by the HHA board. So there's only two non-controlling minority that are appointed by the HHA board that are not under all, all this government appointment.
Ladies and gentlemen, if I can, ladies and gentlemen, if I can interrupt for a second, I think this discussion has now gotten to the point where it digresses from the purpose that was set for this meeting. If we want to, and it's totally appropriate to do so, talk in greater detail about the structure of not-for-profits. I would advise that we either call a special meeting for that purpose or we discuss it at a regular meeting.
Mm-hmm. Understood. Yep.
Well, yeah.
The executive director gave the ultimate answer, Andrew, which is, we don't know what the hell we're going to use for the future not-for-profits because it will depend upon the structure that's determined. But we have broad opportunity for the seven commissioners to decide what that structure will be.
And I, I, I think, I think we could discuss it uh, very simply in our next meeting tomorrow. Uh, just basically as a funding mechanism for the, for the, the process. Because that's really what we're talking about. It's a funding mechanism.
Depending upon the nature of the not-for-profit, that's absolutely true.
Well, so why can't we talk about it right now? It's part of the funding mechanism for this.
We're talking about the funding mechanism part tomorrow, but the other thing, Andrew, is there may be an opportunity for closed session tomorrow.
Okay. We, we, let's, let's hold that and make sure we talk about it because it's a very important topic.
Sure.
And I think there are two parts to it. One is structure of new not-for-profits and whether or not they are actually part of the existing not-for-profit. And the other is the structure of the existing not-for-profit.
Yes, correct.
Awesome.
Same bad channel tomorrow. And Shannon had to leave us, so we, I know we all give Shannon our thanks. And uh, we look forward to this conversation tomorrow and on in the future.
We have to make a motion close or we just end this?
Yeah, I think.
No, there should be a motion, just like any meeting.
Motion.
Aye, in favor, aye.
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 Have a good night, everybody. Great discussion.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Take care, guys.
Good night, everyone.